Oh, here Mike. Okay.
Recording.
I'm muted now.
Are we muted?
You're fine.
You got it.
That's good.
Okay, all right. Um. We'll call the meeting to order. Kim, would you please take the role, please? Counselor Watson.
Here.
Counselor Sovereign.
Here.
Mayor Short.
Here.
Counselor Wreck.
Here.
Counselor King.
Here.
Counselor Bennenfield.
Here.
And Counselor Beasley.
Here, thank you.
You mixed it up a little bit.
Oh, you did. Great job. Thank you, Kim. Are there any changes and additions to the agenda? Is this what you wanted to do now, Kim? For the...
Um, Steve, what I'd like to just briefly tell you what I gave you. We're going to talk about the sheriff's report here shortly. After that, but the other thing was a, uh, comment from a resident, uh, your resident who was on the avenue. I did speak with him and tell him that I spoke with our attorney and we should get something going out this week. Um, and I've been talking to him, so, but we wanted to share it specifically. I think that it's ongoing and she had to put in two more vehicles.
Yeah.
All that stuff, so...
Hold, hold on.
So, I sent the whole file, all that history to the attorney. Okay, so he's having a meeting.
The attorney's on it, though.
Yes, he told me he would get something out. We have that in his book. Okay. Yes, I'm reading.
Um, okay, onto the consent agenda. Has everybody, and thank you, Kim, read all of our minutes? This is fabulous. Doing excellent.
Need our current...
Be pretty caught up here.
Caught up on the meeting?
Yes.
Um, council, I'm still working on, see, while we're in every renewal, there are parts to catch up on, but... Yes, great. So, um, I don't want to forget our page. It's on page twenty, twenty-four of the minutes. So, we'll be, um... Just trying to find my page that was. And it's from the list of, um... The June twentieth.
Mm-hmm.
So, um... Above where it says seven, council signs the protocols.
Did I get your statement wrong?
Yeah.
Okay, what were, what, what do you want me to make sure it says?
Um, so I'll just re- give you the corrections. Can you do that? Wreck said the information put out about the organization taking water rights is incorrect. And she said that according to Western Water Law...
Western Water Law?
Yeah, Western Water Law. No one can take our water rights as we have priority rights.
Okay, thank you. And then the next one, I didn't know if, Lindsay, you said you were gonna be to meet with DDQ and report back to the council?
No. I was gonna, I was gonna, I was interested in working with you.
Yeah, that's right. So, your work, Bennenfield said she'd be interested in being on the committee.
Yes.
Okay, so, did she, did she need the, the, the doodle pool then to be... I, I put it, I gave...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other corrections or additions to the minutes as presented?
I do want to just, just make one quick note on the revenue expenditure report. What is on which data is not final numbers? Um, a audit is really, you know, I made it final final numbers, but this is just, and we make, we had a, that's what things, so it's pretty close to be a final. This is what pretty, pretty close looks like to me. I have a question, but it's not fun, but...
Yep.
Shall I ask a question now?
Yes, please.
So, on the marijuana tax, it looks like we only got ten dollars. They keep, they haven't spent, it's in the LGIP. So, that's part of what's not final is I need to have our accounting specialist move it out of the LGIP and enter it into the, um, the general ledger. She's still catching up on the day of entry for general ledger. Okay. So, it will be reflected. Thank you for asking that. When I give you guys another one after she does the data entry, so I'm hoping by the end of August, it'll be a more clear. And similarly, you have page thirty-one, revenue expenditure. Does your, do those have money there? Yes, the same there, yep. And, um... Final one was, um... Transferred from urban renewal debt service, total revenue requirements. That, those two also... Exactly. She's working on the debt service and the income, uh, the income tax right now. That took, that's a very complicated calculation that I'm hoping we can get our CPA to fix because it's ridiculous and it took her a while figuring it out, so, okay, thank you. I keep hitting this thing up, I have this...
Are there any other corrections?
Um, Kim had a question. Um, page seventeen, um, on page four, look, seven, that's, was that Dennis White or Dennis King? Page seventeen, page four.
Oh, four. Yeah, I called him the wrong name again.
Uh-huh.
I swear I'm like, you tell me something. I mean, the same thing with Tad Nick.
Oh, dear.
Oh, Beanie, Dennis White spoke, but then, so did Dee.
Okay, okay.
It was CA.
They both were sitting next to each other.
So, it's CA White.
No, it's Dennis White.
From the other?
No, Dennis White.
Dennis King.
Dennis King.
CA White.
CA White was not there. Dennis King and Beanie Robinson, thank you.
Joyce knows.
She knows.
Dennis White well.
All right. I don't know why I was having a hard time with the saying. Any other corrections? Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
So...
Is there a second?
No second then.
It's been moved to a second to accept our consent agenda as presented with the changes as noted. Is there any discussion on the motion? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty, thank you. Come on up. Our sheriff is up. Thank you very much for being here this evening and looking at your reports. We'll see you out there at seven o'clock this morning.
Yes.
That was great, thank you. So, um, how's things going?
I think you're doing all right.
Great.
I'm working four, coming in well here. Working modified schedule from...
Two to midnight?
Yeah, from two to midnight, three to four. And we had one fire, one fire that called.
Is that right? Wow.
And I think I might have heard, I think, sorry, I missed it. I think I heard two. So, I think the first one I heard, we were sitting in here. And then the second one, somebody actually called and we were sitting there. And I chose, so, Councilman Bennenfield, that I thought that the entire county was just playing ball and not doing fireworks. And then we drove down the way and we should have.
Was it?
So, it was just like, I wanted to kind of like, just drive around and see where you'd start that point. You don't pay us wire, so it was, it was good.
My dog spit in it.
So, the people, the people pay, I mean, they're the ones who were complying with everything. And we did our best, we were driving around, nobody was...
Thirst.
They were thinking it seriously.
I slipped. I slipped. Now my dog's playing because of a monkey.
And I wouldn't hope this to happen again, but maybe the firemen will... Because if you guys don't know that, we'll start by a fire.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, when it happens so close to...
Exactly. Maybe people are waking up to know that they...
It might be. I mean, fireworks are, fireworks are very, they are all fun. But, very dangerous, especially when it's a strike.
Exactly.
So, thank you very much for that.
Can you share with the council what you were doing that night in the city council chamber and why you were here?
Well, yes, so, on the fourth, there was a crash right out here just south of, south of South Point Street. A mother and an elder, mother, there was an intersection arrested. So, we took temporary custody of the daughter until the grandparent could figure out. And this space was transformed into a playground. About how it happened, she loved it, she was great, she was content, happy. So, thank you for letting us do that.
Absolutely, absolutely, that's what I was there for.
Yeah. So, it's kind of one of the many acts we wear, because we do have to do...
Absolutely.
It doesn't happen often, but it can happen where we're doing one thing and then we're basing it on the child.
Any questions for Sheriff?
Thank you. So, when it says select city, that's out of town. So, when it says depot bay, I don't know if MPSO or the, or anything, but... So, select city, the burglary, that's not here, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, um... And what's SMO state are speaking in?
Which one are we speaking in?
It's on the first page, about ten down, fifteen.
Those are patrol, patrol beats. So, that every location has a, a beat assigned to it. And the state or just along the states, we have added extra mediums so that you can see where it passes.
So, if it says depot bay, but in town, and other than that, it might be presented in the...
Depot, anything that says depot bay should be in town. Other beats will be of range. It's like some sort of similar system, so we're both...
I also, uh, have to go in the sheriff's car. On, um, Sunday, but not in the back.
I tried.
We went, we, we went down to the harbor and walked the harbor, um, knowing people who, uh, had not paid. And, uh, some kayakers, which she managed to catch. And he also buried on a slate, came back later in the day to try to test some of these other folks who hadn't paid. And some of them said they didn't know. And he pointed to the sign, it was right there.
Yeah. That was one thing I started, now the co-hosts are coming in. How was he able to work them temporarily, I think? It was a couple days and it's just then put it back up. But there was thirty or so...
There were thirty-three on Sunday and only twenty-five unpaid.
People were showing back up, so that's investing a little more time going down there and checking in. It's... I'm waiting for people to come back, so I can't even just make a deal.
Sure.
But if I can catch people, then when they come back, I'll have discussions with them. Nothing else, we're investing at least a bit of time into it. Because I just really need a place, they don't need names.
So, where would that show up? Is that just...
That would be an area check. Remember, I don't always list those, but that would be on the first page, one of those area checks. And then it might also be assisted contact, because if I am talking to one of those people who haven't paid, I would make a assisted contact.
What's that for the food pantry? Is there something to have at the food pantry?
Wednesday, yeah, so it's Wednesday, I think.
Yeah, it's open on Wednesday.
Where is it?
At, at the church.
Collins.
Bay, Bay Street, or it's on Collins Street.
Bay Chapel.
Bay Chapel.
So, do you know if, um, Roy is also doing that?
I am not sure.
Yeah, I don't think he is. He's usually on that side. I went down there this morning and I sat down there with my flashing orange light that they need to put on my car. Uh, I didn't know somebody, some folks that I sent to him and then others paid while I was there. They kept looking at my flashing orange light, so I sat there freaking my coffee and watched it. Maybe if I told you to stop them then.
This is the first I've heard, yes.
But, uh, so I'm, uh, he, he also went down here too. I'm trying to watch it for a week, unless you know, we're so busy, just to see, I feel. Because the Parker Commission keeps asking, well, do you know if we're at that kiosk? It's catchy, it's not going to be the kiosk that catches people. They, it's gonna be presence and...
Yeah, I mean, they're, wait, they just miss it. There's signage up here for it, there's signage out for watching. People will say, oh, I didn't know, there's not, like, people that... But that's, I don't believe you. But, then if people I talked to, they said, oh, no, no, you know.
That's great. Thank you.
Uh, one other question though, is the kiosk is the only thing down there, so people still want to get cash.
Yeah, there is no cash.
No, I know, it's like, it used to...
Yeah, there did used to be. And I think I saw that happen this morning where he walked to the kiosk, stood there, it was just kind of like, looked there and then went back. And I think so, I don't know how often that happens, but, uh...
I don't know if I can ask for it, I'm just asking if there's anything to...
There is now.
It's card and so...
We opted to go cashless, because we didn't want to deal with the cash.
Because it can't...
It's easy to report them to get, is immediate, it's awesome. So, we know who has it, we shoot a paper. Yeah. Yeah.
It's awesome.
We can go essentially, so.
Any other questions? All righty, thank you. Thank you, thank you, stay safe.
We got his office in front of us.
Yes. You should look at the floor.
Yes, it does look good.
He's big.
He's on the floor.
Yeah. And our IT department should be coming in, getting whatever they...
Oh, really?
Yeah, really, yes.
Whatever IT is.
Whatever IT is.
Be okay?
We don't know.
It's winter, right?
It's winter, yes.
I keep opening this in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for...
Thanks for your help.
Oh, please.
Good, that was the, for your permission, awesome. Um, okay, emergency preparedness, let's start in with our reports. How'd it go?
Oh, we have a lot of exciting things going on. Um, so our committee is filling out and we have some really, uh, well connected people in the committee. Um, let's see, we have, our meetings are scheduled for the second Monday of the month at four thirty here. Um, so our next meeting is gonna be August fourteenth and we're gonna do some training on radios.
Oh, good.
Um, and we're purchasing radios, um, per the, um, communication team. Um, and so we'll be training on those. And actually, uh, we're gonna be a little bit early that meeting and go look at, uh, site that, um, Brady recommended for a cache on the other side of the creek. So, we're gonna go look at that location and then we'll have our radio training, so that's next month. And then our September meeting, which is the eighteenth, um, we have the, um, Cascade Region Director of the Red Cross.
Oh.
He said to come and talk to us for a couple hours, um, so that's gonna be really informative. Um, and then we also have our October meetings scheduled and, um, we're hoping to get that fire department in, on, on this schedule for that October meeting, looking at those, um, alternative evacuation routes. Um, so we've got, we've got a lot going on with meetings, uh, with that group. I'm really excited with the group. Joyce, would you like to add anything?
Oh, just, um, that, um, that was a lot of what I was gonna say, so that's great. Um, so the water barrels also ready, this purchase, empty water, empty one go. Barrels that we're going to, uh, put to good use, uh, let's see. And another thing too, that, um, when we were talking to, um, Deb about Mara Roche coming in from the, from the, um, Red Cross, it'd be a completely different talk than what Michael Jackson made us a couple, couple months ago. Because she is basically boots on the ground. This is what we need for you to do. This is what we're gonna do when we can. So, um, I would suggest that if anyone wants to sit in, listen to the meeting, come here and listen to it, it might be informative for the council to do that as well, so, um... Were we gonna do like a workshop with the Red Cross and that type of thing? Again, I can make it eleven to eight. Yeah. Because they have just about...
Yeah, this, this lady's coming, it's gonna break the news now.
It's been fourteen months.
Yes, she, I think she didn't have a lot of information for it, so we'll wait for it to pass on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes. So, can I come to the radio training? Because it's no secret, I wanna be on emergency preparedness. And I can't, and I can't be on the committee, but I can still come to the meetings, right?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Do I commission to the radio training?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, it, it's, um, we can listen but not comment.
Okay.
Any questions? If, if it's, we just focus it as a workshop of last trains and she can participate.
I wanna do that, yeah.
You just are not gonna be able to, to discuss emergency preparedness, make decisions.
It was gonna make decisions, yeah.
We'd love to have you, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So, um, I sent to Lindsay and Joyce, I don't, I have looked into, um, then, yeah, when I was on the call where they talked about, um, emergency roads and transportation for resiliency. So, that may, and I have hooked into the, um, to know, but that may be able to improve the escape route, um, south of the bridge and one on the north of the bridge, of, of, uh, Cullen Street that, and they... So, that may be worth looking at. And if it's viable, if one of the infrastructure goes...
Yeah.
Then maybe we, if you guys find it something useful, and I have looked at the criteria, um, or this match, and some of them don't require any match, um, maybe that would be something that applicable could bring back and it's viable. We could set the grant level to a better...
Yeah, I'll, I'll be on that, thank you, Chris.
And one other thing, um, the mayor and I had an appointment on August the fourth to meet with the safety and security manager of the hall. To talk to him about what our committee's doing and what he thinks about, you know, that what he wants to do in an emergency. I don't know, um, if they've done a lot, this is part of the, which is a huge organization, but, um, he was very receptive to talking to us, he's glad we have a committee that's really thinking about this. So, we'll be able to report back in August, right, this time, September, this August. Um, as to, um, I don't know.
Okay, I just want more things. So, you're gonna start hearing more about the cash going in here at City Hall that everybody's familiar with, but that's gonna be going on in the upcoming months. So, getting the site prepped, getting the container in, um, getting shelving in the container, getting electricity through to the container, dehumidifier. Um, so we're, that, that is gonna be a lot of the focus also, especially this first part of this year.
And the funds came.
Oh, yeah.
Yay. Thank you guys, this was amazing.
Anyways, thank you. Fantastic work, so much appreciated.
Any questions if you're in, on emergency, okay? Um, Harbor Restoration Committee?
I...
Or you wanna just do Harbor?
Yeah, I don't think we have anything that the city council doesn't already know.
Okay.
The building process and everything, I think that was covered in the...
Sure. All righty, do you wanna just talk about Harbor?
Sure.
Come on up.
Well, as much, uh, Harbor Commission meeting, um... Talked about a lot of things and, uh... One of the things that we did talk about would be, uh, issue of animals on the dock unleashed and this on the dock. And, uh, when the city staff sends out the new mortgage rate, um, letters and bill, there will be an attachment, um, referring people to the, um... Part of the Harbor regulations that talks specifically that animal, animals must be released. So, that was all on this coverage. When, when the mortgage rate goes to... Some issue on issues on parking down and people wandering, you know, in the street. Like, I'm waiting for, getting the fish company, the dock side. Okay. I'll pick up, dude.
Okay, thank you.
Um, issues about, uh, parking and, uh, people wandering and oblivious to everything else that's going on except what's, what their focus is, so...
Just be...
We're gonna get the staff together with the building over, the, uh, the, uh, business operation and see if they can break something out to get that in control, something that's run over the void. We went over the Harbor Commission Organization code update and, uh, we, the commission as a whole, um, concur with the changes to the, uh, chapter twenty-two, um, of the city offices, so, um, to agree with that. Talked about, uh, storage on the docks, storage of crab pots on the dock. And, uh... There are some insurance issues, liability issues on regarding crab pots on the dock. Uh, I, I think they serve us every once in a while and then it kind of disappears. What we discussed about, to keep it, uh, short, is that, uh, on the new docks, we don't want crab pot storage. And, uh, so we've got between now and the summer of twenty-five, so two, almost two years, you know, to come up with some kind of a solution. We can put, uh, storage containers, uh, which will surround, you know, the crab pot. The crab pots are stacked either ten, either ten or fourteen high. And then, quite honestly, pretty stable, um, once they're stacked properly. They go on, they go out on the boats in the morning, they're taken off, the boats go back and fishing. So, the whale watchers can get that one. And then what happens is they just sit there at night until the next morning, um, when they'll go out again. There is, there are only, I think, a couple weeks that, uh, that there's no crab in the water. So, it doesn't make a lot of sense to have it, you know, to have a storage area, have them take, take them home and what have you. This is a working dock, it's out of Marina, Southern California Marina operation, so... Um, one of the suggestions was to have, uh, our engineering company, B and D Engineering, look to see if they have any connections with, in order to build the, uh, storage, to put storage containers on the new dock. It's a bit of a concern if, uh, give us a solid control structure. We don't want to turn into two of these closets, like, for your, for that. Somebody's garage, you know, everything is stored in the garage. So, a wire mesh container, uh, might be better. But anyhow, we're, we're looking at it in the ways you, maybe that happens. All right, yeah. Okay, you know, with the, you know, about the bidding process, um... We did have another meeting on, uh, Monday this week, yes, yesterday. To talk about the mortgage rates and get the... Consensus on what, um, the new mortgage rates would be and inclusion, including the water and electricity, there is facility electricity, not, because how, the new docks will have pedestals just like these for individual electric, for hookups for the boats to, uh, use electricity. That'd be a separate issue. The overall harbor lighting and issues like, and, uh, water will be included in the, in the mortgage rate. So, city staff, we've gone over it and the city staff and city staff was putting it all together and now present to city council and other staff meetings. Or...
We were talking about...
Okay, well, I don't know, whatever, whatever, whatever you're ready to do.
So, we can get the building done, no, so we can get the building done.
Okay, all right.
A lot of people ask us to get the building, so...
Yeah, okay.
They want to pay it, too. They, they think they, they think they got it all, but haven't paid.
Yeah, yeah.
Why they're going to pay.
And, and other than the fact that this Harbor Commission will be dark in, uh, July, we might have a July meeting. Meet again in, in August and if something comes up in the meantime that, um, requires attention, discussion about Harbor Commission. Anybody have any questions on anything to do with Harbor?
Yeah, so I was at the Harbor Commission meeting. Thank you guys all for your hard work on all of this, but I'm concerned about having, um, no options other than crab pot storage on our docks. It's just, uh, it's an accident waiting to happen and talk about, I don't know, on the city, you know, if somebody gets hurt, so I know it hasn't happened, but it's only case one. Um, so I'm wondering if the Harbor Commission could explore other options about where to store crab pots.
Well, we had talked something, somewhat about that... Well, we had talked something, somewhat about that, but there's not a lot of room down at the harbor to, or space for storing crab pots. And that would be hauling up at the gangway and into that area and then dragging back again in the morning. I understand the concern, that's, that's why we're looking for downstream. I understand that you're thinking, one person could get hurt, but uh. I don't recall an issue with, somebody getting hurt, cause that's a meeting, can't happen.
But you know, the whole, so um, there's docks that um. People and then there's trade ones, they don't store their own crab pots on their docks. And then we have the Fader docks that maybe could be leased, or the Newell docks that could be leased. Why should the city have to bear, bear the responsibility and insurance?
Well, the other thing, another issue there is they'll also have the uh, uh, the mortgage holders, charter operators. Primarily charter, charter operators who have the crab pots, to have them assume the liability from the city between changing the way the licensing goes. So that was, that was one suggestion.
It's not only the charter, now all the other people who tie up, everybody they have the. But, I mean, these are public docks, these are not the docks of the charter industry or any boat owner, these are.
That is true, but they're all working docks and that's, you know, that's part of a.
Yeah, but you get a lot of public walking up and down the docks and the whale watch people and.
Yeah.
Kids, you know, and then there's uh, cross ties across the docks.
Oh yeah.
It's a mess.
It's a mess and it's like a tote.
Oh yeah, yeah, and it, it, it's a little bit bad, it's, truly happens.
And there's totes, but not only that, the other day there was cross ties across the dock, yeah.
What?
And there's totes, there's fishing poles, there's all sorts of junk from the docks, there's carts. I mean, there's trolley carts, I mean, it's a, it really is dangerous. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I, but those things, yeah. I agree with those concerns, yeah.
Councilor Penny Pilk?
Yeah.
I thought today was a alert that in our current leases, that it's pretty clear that there's no storage on the docks, I'm misremembering that.
I, it, yes, we, we don't have.
It's not clear.
No, it is not, there is.
It is, so really it's a.
Well, there's.
Crab pots are allowed for me a certain part of time.
Um, except for three months, like for three weeks.
Yeah.
Years, years ago, they used to store on the boats and then when they would go on a particular fishing trip or they didn't crab, they would send them on to the dock. And, or if they had a whale watch trip, they would be on the dock temporarily and then at night they would be back on the boat.
Now they just don't.
Now they just move them, yeah, so that's kinda changed.
And there's like, one dock had ninety-one crab pots on the dock.
Yeah, so can't we enforce, I think we should enforce our current leases.
The thing is, we could, we could go back to, they go back on the, on the, on the boat at night.
Yes.
Uh, that, the city couldn't, it, that's what they used to do, there's, I think there was some more of that for sure.
But that's not what people are on the docks. Right, it doesn't make a di- any difference for the hazard there.
Yeah, I, the idea of the public building essentially sheds for private use on a public dock, I don't agree with at all. I don't think that we should have any kind of private, leave in your stuff on the docks. And I, I believe it's clear in our current leases, I don't understand exactly why we're not enforcing them, but any kind of um, encouraging that behavior, I'm not, I'm not in favor of. So building any kind of structure in order for the crab pot to be placed, I, I think is out of the realm of what the city should be doing on public docks. I don't think there should be storage on public docks. Uh, regardless of how the docks are used and how the businesses are used, it, it, it's, it's not for an individual charter operation. To have ninety-six crab pots on a public dock, it's, I don't think it's appropriate.
Any other questions for, Jack?
So, um, we haven't renewed leases for um, people. Um, operators having their docks on public property. So when we renew the leases, there hasn't been one since two thousand and six, something like that one.
Yeah.
So when we renew these leases and we, I'm sure we'd offer a first right of refusal to the people that have the current docks on public property. We could encourage them or require them to provide. I mean, there's no reason that trade men should be, for example, putting the crab pots on their own docks. And, and what, you know, the Fader docks, I don't know who owns Trollers docks now, it is a dock set.
The city, city owners.
Is the city, well, that may be a place where we could, we've, you know, put docks back out there and let whole lots of public, but just for people. But I would encourage the harbor commission to look at alternatives to have, you know, that would make it easy to get crab pots on and off the boat rather than going out the ramp, but not on the docks. And I.
Yeah, and we, we have, we have discussed some of those operations and also saying if, if uh, Carrie can, you know, she's not using her, all her docks. But uh, I, what I, the sense I get from the discussions we've had. Is that the uh, the boat captains, you know, are. Are not um. Pleased with having, with having to, would probably be pleased with having to, okay, leave, okay, I've got it over here, hopefully they can, back and become people or people than don't. This, one of the things with which we deal on the docks is. Oh, we've always done it that way for ages and nobody's ever complained and yada, so it is, it's not something that's easy to turn around, so um.
I remember when there wasn't any crabbing, you know, because during salmon season, I don't know if people are busy enough, that they do crabbing to tuna fishing or halibut fishing. I remember the one, there wasn't any crabbing, it's when, only when the rockfish, you know, was such an attractive thing, that, that they started doing crabbing.
Well, even, even, you know, and, and also even, you know, even when they're tuna fishing and going out, not everybody's tuna fishing, there, there's still people doing the ground fishing and stuff and that. So, yeah, so it's, again, it's, it's, there's a lot of stuff there.
Yes, so, and, and the boat captains, we'd remember to turn the water faucets off. When I walk, when I'm down there at night, I check and make sure that it's flipped to left, because when the water faucets are left on and the hoses aren't keeping fire, just the.
The city.
Yes, and then um, if.
Oh, we're gonna start paying for that.
Yeah, oh, we are.
But it's accepted, it's gonna be a, a.
Is it flat rate or?
A flat rate, it's, but it's a flat rate, it would be subject to change, like council can increase at any time, council can increase.
At any rate, yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, water research, like, has. Um, and.
But we'll, we'll make a note of that.
Is, is the commission discussing the leases on the docks that have been absent now for ten years or however long?
That part's also gonna be under proof to the council to negotiate and have attorneys back that.
Okay, okay.
But he's discussed, I don't think there's any need to get back that list up.
Okay, thanks.
And that's uh.
Above through, you know.
Thank you, Jack.
Any other comments to add?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, all righty, thanks for bringing us up to date. Um, the council's committee did meet yesterday and we are making the final revisions to an ordinance which will go into effect. After we do a public hearing on this, because we need to identify a piece of public land where we can offer people to kind of banner a place where they can stay. And so it's gonna be identifying someplace in the city where we can do this, so um, they've got really, uh, Kim has did an amazing job on this ordinance. And she's, piece, pieces from different cities so that ours um, is cohesive for what our needs are here. And so um, I don't know, we haven't decided on how we're gonna do a public hearing yet.
No, I mean, I, I granted that hiccup I told you about today, so.
Oh, that's right.
One of the things that the Lila Urban Cities and other cities have been hoping for is that Rex Pass, who's kind of leading the effort, because he's the one who started all this banings. Tried to get the appeals court, full appeals court with the new members to hear their, you know, objection to this homeless code, basically. Well, the appeals court is used to hear it. So there was hope that with this new group, it would change up the rules a little bit, because they're really challenging for the cities to handle right now. So the, the Rex Pass isn't done, they're gonna appeal it to try and get the Supreme Court to hear it. In the meantime, Portland passed their daytime camping ban. And now that is about to be challenged legally. Our potential only allows camping at night in the park, because that's the only place we have right now. So this will be something you guys will all be talking about, this is gonna come before, hey, uh, I could basically, I was thinking of them. It'll be an open meeting to get feedback if that's what they do, we are exploring other places, but we have to provide them a place.
Right. Just, I'm sorry, I just.
I know, I know.
I just, I just wanna say that I believe that the best location in the city is the parking lot of City Hall right here. Not the park, not the harbor.
Oh, I, and you know, it actually can be, um, some cities are doing that, you betcha, some, some are doing that.
This part of the grid, yeah. Yeah. I just wanted to say, cause I'm not, I'm, I'm not gonna be at the next meeting, so in case this comes up, I wanna be with you.
Oh, wait, also, okay.
That this parking lot at City Hall, I believe is the most appropriate location.
Okay. And it's, we wanna take it to the public first and get feedback.
Right, right.
And there was a suggestion on the south over the middle of the city where the water encounter is, but Brady hates that idea, because there's a lot of charred security and stuff like that.
Right, right here in the middle, eyes on the streets.
Earl Louis was another suggestion, but that would probably require a lot of power to get to.
Sorry?
Earl Louis. Sit by that.
Oh.
Do something with the ground, tear it down, you know, provide that spot, that was one option, so there's been different options.
Yeah.
Um, but here's, the problem is, and then maybe that's where it is, but then you have to decide what does that look like and how many.
How many spots, is, yeah, two spots enough, have you, have you got any curers?
What we're doing is, um, we've identified um, areas that are ten by ten. And so wherever spot we have, that's how many spaces we'll have is.
Whatever fits in ten by ten.
The, the counters will have a ten by ten area.
Okay.
And from, we're saying from ten o'clock at night till seven thirty in the morning, they would have to be completely let, leave.
Excellent.
And um.
Ten by ten.
Which is what, part of it is why it's being fought, going to be fought in Portland is saying people have to move.
Right.
Because where, like a lot, I heard today that homeless folks say that they sleep at night, or they sleep during the day, so they can't sleep at night. So where do they go then? We have to provide them a place, which means that if we have three homeless families, three camps, three people that camp, and we have to rush them, they have to have a place to go.
But they don't have to have a tent set up during the day. They, they can go sit at the park, they can go sit.
Exactly, and that's what I'm saying, yeah, it's the night where they would need to camping, they have to be able to be warm, so that's our biggest concern, you know. It's where do we send them then?
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I just remember in the Lila Urban Cities publication, and I think it was Seaside, they also have where you have to register. And you can only stay a, a week, or two weeks of the year, and then you're done for the year. That's all, the raw permission to, and that's great, thank you so much, that's a good thing, though.
Well, we're definitely, we're doing the uh, register, but the conditions of the time, that's not gonna be considered as active, reasonable. Because we're not gonna be able to do that, I can, I can order Seabrook on it, but we.
I think it was Seaside, it, I don't know if it's legal or not.
I mean, Portland is like, they're challenging the objective reasonable, because they said, well, if you don't let them sleep, if you don't let them camp during the day, that's when they sleep, where are they supposed to go? Well, the rule, the H B three fifteen, thirty one fifteen says we have to get them a place.
So.
It's gonna be interesting, I wish it was gonna be settled sooner, but it's.
No, it's gonna all go to case law eventually.
Oh, yes, and we may take a hit by these days, I'm just hoping that we can um, borrow our base, you know, all the cities. And we're going through stuff to find out what we can buy.
Yes, whatever happened to the um, joint um, with Newport? Yeah, with Newport and the city where we might have been able to, it's just temporary, until we can provide transportation to our. We're, we're working on all of that. Okay, so we still have to provide it until.
We still, in the city of Equal Bay, have to have a place where people will sleep.
Ten by ten at the top, right.
Right, so. Yes.
Uh, I, all I know about this is what I read in the paper, but I could have sworn I read that it was, it applied to cities of ten thousand people.
Oh, no, no, no.
No, it's every city and state.
You're probably thinking about climate equity and friendly, climate equitable and friendly communities, that's ten thousand.
Every incorporated city has this regulated.
Every, every city, I know, it's unreasonable, they really.
It's very, and we're getting zero money for it.
Yes, and yes, we're getting zero money for it, the governor's declaring a personal city without the support to take care of it, so the cities have to. And it's not gonna be something at all, like, at all.
So we'll set up a date and we'll have it at next week's meeting, when we're gonna do a public hearing. Any other questions on?
Thank you, no, thank you for working on it, it's really lovely.
Absolutely. The county is still working on, um, I'm going to another meeting next week on possibly um, forming a coalition between Benton, Lincoln and Lynn counties. And working the three counties together, uh, to bring services into a more qualified um, relationship, so that's, that's, that's exciting too, so. Anyway, let's go on, um, planning, planning.
Any questions on planning? That is Eric Sherman.
Oh.
No, he's off, nevermind, he's on.
Eric's gone.
Well, we had the uh, before the. Oh, that's right, it was included last night.
Yeah.
I keep, I keep forgetting we got to the first meeting of July, I don't know how that happened.
Anything from parks?
Uh, parks, I can just give you a quick update on that, they are going to be bringing to you guys at the next meeting, I think. The moving of the Katy Royal Memorial, we met with the family, um, it was a fabulous discussion. They are very thrilled with the possible suggestion that we will present to you. Um, they're gonna work and it'll make everybody happy, we found, like, may, not make everybody, we won't happy depending on whether they like to be stoned behind or they're very stupid things behind. But it was a wonderful visit and I think, I think it'll make the council, it'll make everybody happy and it makes the family happy, the mother and the sister. So I think, I feel as long as they're happy and then we can go ahead with it.
You could do it.
Um, it won't be a center anymore, um, they are going to, they're, that was a big thing, the tour that they did, ran really well, they had some suggestions that I need to type up to get to Brady. But they gave some good suggestions about some things they're gonna do, and they also dropped some ideas about things like not naming city parks. That was a big one, I remember that one, uh, they're not gonna ask to have that sale moved in more, so there was a bunch of stuff on that.
Oh.
There's four members now, so uh, it's a good group, they're just finding their feet, so um, they're just finding their feet right now and, and they'll get some traction, but.
Cool.
It's good.
Thank you. Beanie, anything on salmon enhancement?
Yes, a little bit.
Good, come on up.
I'm gonna talk to Dash as usual.
Do you uh, want me to get ready with those? Wait.
How, how long do you have to wait?
I'm, just seconds.
Seconds.
Alright.
The July fifteenth uh. Stream stewardship and partnership program, we, the committee felt like we could not get our program together enough to do that. We didn't want to put anything on there that was halfway, so.
Oh, okay, so that's canceled.
You're, you're, yeah, you're, you're, you're free on July fifteenth.
Okay.
Netpen. We put in the order for the uh, new fish pen that we're buying, it was eighteen hundred and eighty dollars.
Yes. Wow, that's pretty soon.
We got two month delivery, um, funding is guaranteed. Uh, I thought it was pretty interesting that, that the social economic end of this. If you break it down to a hundred dollars a fish, it's eighteen fish. Generating revenue in Equal Bay, there are a number of people that fish that understand that, so we're good there. If you'd like, I was up in an airplane and took some pictures of our watershed. And I didn't want to do propaganda one way or the other.
Are you interested? Would you like to see him do?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Give me a second, share.
That doesn't look like watershed up there.
That's me. Give me a second to plug in, I unfortunately have to share. Yeah, so it took me a little while, a second. It's done.
Recording.
Sorry. Okay, Brady, why is it?
There we go.
Let me bring this up, I just want to talk. Okay. It's farthest.
Where's my pointer? Obviously, that, that big straight line there is Collin Street. Right up to the very end, um.
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
And to the left up on that hill, that was the present. Who's that?
What do you wanna, what do you wanna point at?
Yeah, there we go, there, there, yeah.
See what I'm on the point at, see my hand?
Collin Street, the straight.
Right back.
Yeah. That's Collin's.
It's gonna be slow.
That's Collin's street.
It's gonna be slow, but, okay?
Okay. To the left?
And then to the left where the clear cuts on the top up there is.
This one?
Yep.
These are the clear cuts in the land that was so originally.
And, and those little strands of trees are, um, setbacks for water seeps. It creaks and, they're not really creaks right now, they're, they're just, yeah. They're, they're, there isn't any, um, it's dry. And the Coast Guard Station is way over there on your right side on the bay. And if you follow that up, kind of diagonally to the top of uh, Collin Street.
Yes.
And then up that ridge, those, that's the split on the watershed.
Like this?
No, to the left of that.
Maybe let's.
There's that green way, there are a lot of trees, and then to the right, there, 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 pretty much like that, that's the,
Why do you feel like that? Okay.
That's the split on the watershed between North Deepo Bay Creek and South Deepo Bay Creek.
Okay.
The current area.
Okay, next image?
Next image, not necessarily in any particular order.
Okay, that's just image two.
Okay, that is looking down at the reservoir, then you really can't see this, um, Scotch broom area, it's just to the east of, uh, what, what is it,view of the bay or? Hills of Deepo Bay. The hills of Deepo Bay. Or, or view of the bay, how's your help, you're right, I see. Yeah. But again, you can see, and there are not streams in where those trees are, they're seats.
He's here.
Yeah, and, and some of them next to the reservoir, you might get two gallons a minute out of it, but they're protected.
So what, what is it, one tree buffer?
No, a tree buffer, yeah, and a seat, and it is, uh, operations, I mean, I think those, those guys are playing by the rules. You're, you're correct, you're, they're getting all the timber that they, they can, but they're playing by the rules and setbacks. And where this clear cut is off to the right, if you follow this down into that group of trees, uh, probably fifty or a hundred feet would be the South tributary. That piece where that pointer is, is a logging road that is coming in, and I'm thinking, uh, that's in their plans sometime in the near future.
All of that area.
Yeah, but if you took that line of, Scotch broom and that clear cut, and then you moved over fifty or a hundred feet into those trees, that's where your stream is.
Could you, so can, uh, where, where her cursor is now?
Where the what?
Where your cursor is now?
No, he's saying if you go, this was the bridge, ah, see, it's just skipping around, this is the one area, right? But you said.
That's the log, that's log area.
Right, but you said where the Scotch broom is, right.
Scotch broom, where those seep, all those seeps, right where that pointer is, is right where this
Right, where it's.
stream is, fifty, a hundred feet inside of that timber. And this, they did not spray it for Scotch broom, that's why it's growing in the following, because it's not sprayed.
Aren't they required to replant trees?
Uh, yeah, they do that later. I think next year they're gonna do the replant.
I think they probably plant it right within the Scotch broom.
Yeah.
I don't think they have to clear it, I, I know I see new growth where it's right in the middle, like, you just drop it in there.
I think they have to replant since three years.
Oh, they have three years?
Next picture, please, I guess.
Oh my.
And again, this is in no particular order. Okay, this is, uh.
Oh, that's a good image of that, isn't it?
The bottom end of this, kind of that white spot, that's the city reservoir.
Right over here?
Very far.
Right down here? Oh, yeah, I found the other pictures.
Right, right.
Yeah. Okay.
Right in there, right in that little. And so you can see the setbacks all the way through there, you get to the city reservoir, and you look at, from the Scotch broom to the city reservoir.
That's really.
It isn't really that much, but it's there.
That's always wrong right there, right, Brady?
Correct. And that is the, you can see the stream running up through there, and off to the up, upper left, that is the north branch. And that stream, there's not too much there. And where the timber is off in the high right, is the, the stream bed for the, uh, south branch of that creek. That's the fresh clear cut, that dark brown. Yeah. And the next one? Please?
That just looks sad, yeah, I mean, I know why they do it, but it just looks sad.
Look how steep those.
That's, that's enough sad, you know? That's what's going on. Um, okay. And again, bottom of the reservoir, the little mirror spot, that's the city reservoir. Follow that path of light green up there is, uh, another little water feeding for, for the creek. And I believe, maybe it'll be the next picture. There it is, again, reservoir off to the right, that's the major tributary, South tributary to, uh, that creek feeding on creek. And that used to have beaver content, but beavers are known, they're there, they have health concerns.
Oh.
And you're all good with the water?
No, but, oh.
So anyway, that's, that is, uh, that's the watershed, they're looking at those trees. Down hill the other way, some of that stuff, you, you really don't get how steep the terrain is until you're looking down the other way.
I don't see any aversion control provisions.
It's pretty aggressive.
Um, that was Rocky Creek watershed, oops.
Oh.
That's okay.
Hang on, I lost my left arrow.
That's Rocky Creek. And you, that's them. And Jones Bridge.
You guys have been working a lot, I think.
And everything, and you can see the green back there, which is beautiful, and the others, but anyway, just that. That's, that's what it looks like from the, up there, the bank doesn't look so steep.
Where's this?
That is the upper end of South Deepo Bay Creek by the power station. And so, that would probably be the second or third cut back there, but again, they're following directions here, but, you know, give it, they're making money, but they're kind of giving us some protection. Everybody has a different thought on this, and I, I thought you just be aware of it, I don't like these photographs, you, one way or the other, you know, you can take your own assumptions out of that and, and do that, but.
Thank you.
Thank you, it's a great thing. Part of it went better, next time I get the pointer. You gotta thank Kim for, uh, running that up.
For his first, yeah. Yes, we will make sure you have a pointer next time.
Yeah. The, uh, well, I'm not quite done yet. With that being said, inside the city limits, there's water billments along that creek. There are some seeps there that are very important to that creek. And I would think, I would hope maybe the city rules are different than the logging rules, but I can hope that we at least get that along that creek. That creek, you know, sanding means a lot to Deepo Bay. Despite, you can see where the private funding is coming from. That north creek and that reservoir is the only creek we can do our sanding project on. Need the protection all the way through, we want to get the partnership and stewardship going on down on that lower end. Rocky Creek fell offline the other day, which is pretty desperate. Brought quickly. Yeah, there's a that, that creek can't keep up with the water used in Deepo Bay, even close. We want protection on that creek, we want to think about it, I mean.
Could you get the tax law numbers? Of where the seeps are?
Yeah. We can.
I need help with them.
You know where the seeps are, you cruise out.
Yeah, I know where the seeps are.
And there's water, that was that.
And there's water.
And we need it.
Yeah, I talked to Brady earlier too about a concept there, so.
We'll get there, it's not being adversaries, it's being a partnership, whole.
But if we do the comprehensive plan update and update the goal five inventory, we can include those as significant resources. But, um, we need the tax law numbers, and, uh, need to identify where those seeps are. I can, I can get it, I think I can get the tax law, which I can manage to.
Okay.
So the county system, oh, so easy, yeah, it can, we can.
Yeah. But if you couldn't do it, how soon do you need those, we're not waiting.
Well, we're not doing the, uh, the comprehensive plan update yet, but Kim should be aware that there's concerns. And, and he's been involved in those discussions, so.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Yeah, okay.
That's what I was hoping to.
Yeah, so I will, uh, Kim's on vacation right now, somebody's got him to sleep, so we can discuss that with him. And, um, Chair Hawes said ask about the comprehensive plan, and I'm meeting with Big Grant Riders tomorrow, it just might have what we can do to get them going on that among these other projects.
Yeah, I'm sorry you didn't get the bottom end of those creeks, something that, like, some of them didn't turn out. The intent wasn't to go up there and spy, I was intending to go up there and see what's going on and, and understand that.
Very helpful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, here, adios. Okay, uh, public comment, do you have any public comments? Okay, we'll move on to the second reading of the, um, business license code change ordinance number three three nine dash twenty three. Has everyone read the recommendations from Kim as to also need to do is?
It's just a motion to read the ordinance by title only, and then read the terms, and then I don't, I have a motion to adopt.
Okay, is there a motion to read the ordinance number three three nine dash twenty three by title?
So.
Let's move on.
I'll second it.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alrighty, so this is ordinance number three three nine dash twenty three, city of Deepo Bay, and ordinance amending ordinance number two four three, business regulations, section one one two, or one one zero point oh four, license required, and declared an emergency. Um, is there a motion to accept ordinance number three three nine dash twenty three as right into your?
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt an amending ordinance number, uh, two forty three. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we got through that one, and I heard it, let's go on. Okay, um, this is just business up, updating you on the check down study. This is the official agreement, and I hope everybody's had a chance to read this and memorize it, but it looked pretty neat. And Pete did go over it for us, so it is, uh, what we wanted to do. So this is the agreement for the professional services that we have to do for mitigation on the, um, park.
I agree with that, what is the second agreement?
Three years, I guess.
Three, three years.
There's plenty of time, so.
Right.
They're just going to do it, uh, similarly, whenever they do, uh, somewhat more dormant construction, so they do it at the same time, sorry.
So is there a motion to accept the, um, agreement for profession, professional engineers, uh, services as presented?
I'll second it.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Okay, it's been motion seconded to, um, accept this agreement for pro, professional engineering services, so this is from our, our P and D, our engineers. Is there, um, what are we doing here? Is there? Is there any discussion on the motion? Thank you. No discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, yeah. We gotta do it, guys. Um, okay, Kim has researched putting out banners for us for Christmas, Christmas in July here, so, um, has everyone had a chance to read through all of the, uh, discussion?
There's still questions about background, and I do okay explaining why we're there.
Okay. So we need a motion to accept a banner and banner, banner, I'm gonna, whole contract agreement with the, um, utilities. There's two separate agreements, so can this, um, motion to accept the banner and holiday light whole agreements? Agreements?
Your honor, I moved that the council approved the two agreements with Central Lincoln People's Utility District.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the, um, banner and holiday light whole agreements as presented, is there any discussion on the motion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Okay, well, we get our oils up now. And as soon as we get our list in, which Brady's ordered, we'll get the old ones down, and then we'll probably come up later and talk about them.
Oh, and we want to have those things flapping in the wind this morning.
Do you have an inventory of listing polls?
Yeah.
There is one that exists, okay, good.
Yeah.
It counted. There is, actually, I think it's in the file.
There's some.
At the equal.
There, yeah, there is some, like, Chester's Market, but we're not doing those.
Oh, okay.
Well, we're gonna try to get that one down.
We'll get them down, but, uh, the idea was only if those.
We're not gonna do that.
No.
Okay, now, see, no.
Uh, we have an amendment to Portland State University salaries survey agreement of a hundred and how much dollars here?
Yeah, it ends up being a hundred and, yeah, a hundred and twenty two extra. And it just because it didn't get done last fiscal year, I didn't even know, I'm not sure I get enough, they're close, um, we just don't have it yet. So part of the delay was, uh, giving some of the material to them, and then getting the material from you.
Okay, so is there a motion to accept the amendment number one to the PSU agreement number one one two nine five?
We're fine.
So, um, with that motion. Okay, it's been moved, is, is there a second? Okay, it's been moved, is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to accept the agreement number, amendment to number one to the PSU agreement. Um, is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes, Mayor, I just had a question for the city recorder on this. Recorder said that the study was not completed by the end of fiscal year twenty two, twenty three, at which time the contract was to expire, and that we're given a rate increase. Was this the result of anything on the part of the people that were doing the study that it wasn't done? Or was it on our end?
But, um, all of the above. A little part on our end in getting this up to them based on they're doing it during, part during the budget season. Partly was because Daniel got me an email, giving them the agreement, so they didn't know it was going. And partly because trying to get the data from the other cities that they need in order to compare. They had some challenges with some of the cities who were going through more upheaval than we are. So, uh, yeah, anyway, they sent me some final documents, or a data set, if you will. So I know they're close, um, I just don't know how close. And I thought they told me by the end of this month, but I'm just asking verification and I don't have that before today. I should know by next Tuesday.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alrighty, thank you. Alrighty, um, public work supervisory classification. Brady and Kim, do you want to update this, um, what's going on here and representation?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, um, we, in the past at some point, I understand that there was an idea to provide some leave for Brady. As a whole work, you guys, Brady, in order for him to, he's, he's torn between doing the upper level work that he needs to do to make sure projects get done and do the plan that he does, he's due for wastewater, you know, stuff like that. Torn between having to be in the field, helping out, dealing with problems and stuff like that.
The guys more involved, yeah.
Um, and so they're really, that has, that's been the piece that's missing, not for lack of them wanting to do it, just for lack of them not having time. So the idea is that having this position, which is kind of like the one that was originally positioned as a field supervisor, supervisor that never actually got approved by anybody, um, it kind of just happened from what I understand, but probably explain to me. Um, but this does define, this sets the position and says it's, it's going to be in salary study. I already mentioned it to him, I may would make sure to go to time frame that if it's approved, you go and put it in. That's why there's no wages in here. Now, the person that we would like, and I'd ask you, consider putting into this role, which is Paul Carter. He is our water operations and he already in a lot of ways has been Brady's primary man.
Yes.
Um, and he's been getting his certifications for water and wastewater. So, um, he's gone for his level three, which would give him the same kind of signature authorities as Brady, which we really need. Whereas the other person that I originally considered him, he's just not getting his certification. So we need somebody to back up Brady. Right now, Brady can't be gone. If he needs to go, there's.
He's just fine.
He can't be, you know, gone, so. And, but the idea partially is to have, uh, this position be Brady's legs, if you will, out in the field and to oversee the crew from a standpoint of helping them focus. Focus on the work that they need to do, focus on tasks, stay on tasks. Um, he's the, he's got some great ideas.
We do, yeah.
And he's made some great plans already and I, I think that, uh, having this would be a really good step. Not only, we've all, somebody asked me today, is Brady retiring? No, Brady is not retired, but he could pretty soon, right?
Right.
So this also gives us succession planning, meaning that if Brady just decides, I have him, we've got somebody who will be able to step in and.
Yeah.
And Brady will be training him on the things like paperwork and, um, reports and all of the stuff you have to do for having wastewater.
Yeah, I've been doing two positions since twenty thirteen, so.
And, and Paul is more than capable of doing the water and handling that as well as taking on the.
The crew, yeah, he's got certs in all of departments, which is.
And he's got the background in that, in supervising.
Yeah, he's been Coast Guard Chief, retired, so. And we class, and it used to be a field supervisor, I changed it to a field supervisor.
Is there any questions for, no, I have one, um, on number eleven, city enforcement officer. Can you tell me?
That's currently my position and I share that with the city planner. They use them, but some of them.
I'm going to ask you guys to come later to also appoint me as a federal enforcement officer, because I.
Wow, this is all different.
I do it anyway, so Brady and I have more than together too, and so.
Good, thank you. Okay, is there a motion to accept this? Oh, we are sorry, Graham, so, um, just going back to what I was talking about before, um, about how much grant money's out there. Um, who would be freed up, Brady be freed up to pursue that more, or you have?
Sure, um, I don't know if Brady would have time to actually go active looking for them, but when it comes time to apply one, he could now do the leg, the legwork on the ground to get the data that we need to.
To measure, yeah, I've done this.
To work with a city engineer to get the plans and drawings and, and take that burden.
Okay, so that would be Brady's part of it.
Yes, that would be a good thing for Brady.
It frees you up to do more.
Right, because right now he can't do chiro's now because he's too much on the ground.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes.
Is this, is this position described in our charter? I recall that our charter, and I don't have it in front of me, describes certain positions that the city must have, such as a city recorder and so on. Was the city superintendent one of those positions? Do we need to?
It is not.
Charter?
No, the only thing in our charter is the municipal court, the city recorder, and the city attorney. Now, the council under the charter has the ability to, um, appoint, hire, appoint any other officer they wish. But right now, and as far as the public works director is appointed as an officer, he's listed as supervisor in a handbook, but there's never been an actual appointment that we are aware of him as a, um, officer. But he is to all kinds of purposes because he reports to you guys. Um, so, but hiring a supervisor just not, that's not an officer, that's not the same thing. So it's not.
It's not an attorney.
It's not, it's what you call in the purview of us to do as your supervisors.
We're not his supervisor.
Right, Brady is still the supervisor.
When supervisor, supervisor supervisor. Okay, we got that. Okay, now, is there a motion to accept this clarification on the public works supervisor?
I move, uh, Mayor, the council approved the creation of this classification as a position of public works supervisor.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to go forward with the public works supervisor position. Is there any other discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Paul, you're hired.
As a signal, is there any objections to us having Paul tax law?
He's, he's awesome, I mean, he's, he sat for his level three, but he missed it by something.
Yeah, seven.
Oh, I'll think of it next time. He sat for his level three recently, he could do it again in six weeks, about two weeks ago, yeah.
Yeah, it's like an engineering.
So it's hard tax, it's really hard tax.
Those are tough.
Oh, it's awesome.
And Nate's going back to his chamber recently, and Paul, not Paul, Al, moving on to his water one, right? So there, these guys are really, these guys are really proud of it, that they're starting to step it up.
Good.
It's wonderful. Thank you.
Wonderful crew.
Brady makes a joke.
Moving on to the salmon bait, Kim, do you want to update us on what's going on with that?
So, um, as you all know, there's a lot of things going on within the chamber. Well, I know, but then because they asked me to do, because they are not going to be able to put the salmon bait on, out. Um, they're not sure to go, they just, other stuff going on, I mean, I, I could go through a long story, but basically they're not going to be able to do it, they're not, they're not going to have volunteers. Um, they're not going to even have the internal volunteers to the chamber to help with it. So, um, the reason I wanted to bring it to you because, uh, I'm just going to give you my feelings, which is totally taken from what I work at, but I've been here since August. But to me, salmon bait feels like is an integral part of Deport Bay, meaning that is what we're known as. So I was hoping that bringing it to you, if the council decides they don't want to take it on, you don't want to take it on. But I didn't want to just let, meaning that if chamber says, oh, we're not going to do it, boom, fuck it. So I wanted to, you know, at least bring it before the council to see if there's any interest in doing this. And I thought, well, if you're having interest in doing it, then I thought, well, what we could do is to gauge the city's interest by simply going out and posting on Facebook and saying, dear Deport Bay, the fate of the salmon bait is essentially in your hands. The chamber is not going to be able to do this anymore. The city would like this to continue, but they cannot do it themselves. So step up, and if you don't get the volunteers, to me, that says the city doesn't feel the same about salmon. Um, or we just say, well, we're not going to do it this year, we're looking to do it next year and let this all look like. Um, or we do a very modified money, not try to go to get the buses and just try to stay internally. Or we don't do anything at all. So the chamber is kind of standing by waiting to decide, to find out what the city wants to do. They have already been asked a number of times from people about whether or not the city's going to put, or whether or not there's going to be a salmon bait. They did their local contest and they have some beautiful photos they shared with me. Um, but they're just on hold pending a decision.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, yes, please. Okay, has the city ever put this on, or has it always been a chamber of commerce?
I understand it was a nonprofit group at some point, right? Um, Council Sovereign, if you could raise a case about it a little bit more, maybe, pass me a short mic. There was like a whole group that did it before, um, at some point, um.
I didn't hear what Brady said.
Roger Robertson did it personally. But last year was done basically by myself doing the entertaining, Indian dancing. Um, and tents, Kathy did the food, all the food, and in Taunton's, Phil and his sons did the fire one. And it was us three that were the main cause in how it even functioned last year.
And neither one of them wanted to participate in it this year. Um, but they're both, I don't know about Kathy, I don't want to speak for her, but I know that Brady definitely said, well, the city doesn't.
I, I'm not understanding Brady, it's the first.
And the crew is willing to help out, but as long as they know what they need to do and they have time to do it.
Brady, would you say you're not interested?
I was not going to.
You were not?
If, if it was going to be ran like it was last year, because it was very, um.
It was very disorganized.
It was just, yeah, and promises weren't kept and it was very, um.
And we weren't in charge. I personally love the salmon bait. It is such a joy to, um, participate in that. And I would, if the city wanted to go forward with it, I would help in any way.
But we need the volunteers, and I think if we don't get them, then maybe, that's, the sad thing is maybe that's not enough for the president. They just don't want it anymore.
So uncertain whether we can communicate, like, I have some type of flag at the post office or Chester's as well as, as social media, because our citizens don't always have social media. Okay, but in the city.
And that's what the council wishes to proceed, at least see whether there's any interest in it.
If it's one thing for people to sign up four months in advance or five months, whatever it is, another thing for them to show off the word. You know, just knowing how much Joyce did, know what's to, how much Joyce took on to make that fiftieth celebration happen. I, I really, um.
It would not be the council doing it, it would be a separate committee of volunteers that we have.
Well, the council would be doing it, because Brady would be doing it. I say, we put it squarely on the chamber and say, we can't pull it off this year and take some more time. I just, this is me, you know, maybe, I just expressed my own opinion, I just, we have so many priorities. I'd rather, I keep on saying, pursue all this grant money out there. You know, if we're going to do anything, let's get this infrastructure taken care of. Let's get, you know, let's have people spend time and what will bring the most benefit to the city. And I like the salmon bait, I really do, but it's only a few months away, I don't think we have time.
Sixty days. That's, that's sixty days. I have a couple of questions. How much money from the proceeds from last year, when they wanted to give the city to do things like buy this?
They, we have not gone that far, and we haven't pursued that, and maybe that's something I should have asked about it, but, um, uh, it's just whether or not you guys even want it.
And then that's another, excuse me, that's getting to a point, we have nothing in the budget.
Yeah, what about fire? Did you check with the fire marshal?
I know he was here today, but I totally forgot to ask.
Uh, because in the past, historically, it has been canceled due to fire issues.
We're very small.
So everybody out there right now. So personally, I would, I would like to see us maybe solicit, you know, bidders to coordinate the event. The event is up for perhaps or whatever. Who, who out there is interested, but we're not going to do it this year, period. We can't, it's sixty days. That's, well, my previous life was an event coordinator and to even think about it keeps me awake at night. So, no, we can't do it. I mean, have we even done a recap of the budget from the last event we did? I mean, there's, there was so much.
My apologies, I can't.
That's okay. I mean, and there again, I mean, I spent a thousand dollars putting volunteers up that came from out of the area, out of my own pocket. You know, so you've got to think through the whole thing. It's not just about getting everybody, you know.
I would expect the effort, pay for volunteers, come out of town to stay here.
I, I did, it was, it was.
That was a nice thing you do, but I would never. I would think that if we don't get the volunteers in the city to do it, then.
Well, yeah, if she hasn't gotten through the chamber, through whatever efforts she's spent, they're just.
She hasn't done any efforts.
Yeah, okay.
Well, it means she just.
She hasn't, she just hasn't, no. She's not even in town right now.
Yeah, it's totally complicated.
Yeah, Counselor, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I want to thank Councilors Recht and Sovereign, I think they nailed it. I would hate to see us get involved in this at this late date. Our job is not to coordinate or throw events or festivals. Our job is to, is to support them. I mean, that's, our, our room tax money has to go to that by law. And so, uh, I wouldn't be opposed to the city issue in the future RFP to bring somebody on to run it, uh, like the, maybe the, you know, there are other groups that could do it. But I, I just think we ought to stay completely away from this thing, other than supporting whoever wants to put it on. And, and volunteerism is down across the board. Fire departments can't get volunteers, we can't even get them for city committees sometimes. So the, the events like this, their, their time may have come and gone. I don't know, but we can't get involved in another five alarm fire right now. Thank you.
That's something, yes, yeah, I have to agree, I don't think we should do it this year. It just isn't way too much work, Brady shouldn't have to work his tail off to.
Try to pull it back. Um, yeah, maybe they, you think the chamber would get their, um, together for next year, maybe?
Probably not, they just wanted, it could potentially apply to the RFP. They may not be here much longer. So I'm pretty sure that there's, it will not happen.
And I don't think you're going to get as many volunteers as, uh, we need, because they all are like, and, you know.
They're all old people.
They're very old.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, who even needs a leader?
I agree, it's, it's just one of those things, it would be nice to know whether we would have gotten volunteers, but like I said, it's up to you guys. So here's the thing, if you say no for this year, then are we saying no, we don't want to take it on at all, period, ever? Or we just say no this year, boom, yeah, go ahead and get a salmon bait, we'll do it next year.
No, no for this year. But we got to keep our options open, guys. I mean, that is a, 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 a community event that we're famous for.
We have raised enough, it would be in our.
Right, right.
Why, why?
Wouldn't be us ever.
Right.
Right, but we would be the, um, contract administrator. Yeah, exactly, that's nice.
Yeah.
And you guys would be overseeing it and, you know, they'd have to be the voters. So then at some point, maybe after first year, you could say, eh, it's yours. You know, and there's no reason why you couldn't do that, so.
With the fiftieth, we started putting this in October, for May.
Exactly.
And, and, and it took a lot of those days and weeks and months.
Oh, I, I'm very familiar with that.
Oh, I'm sure you are, so if we, even if we think about doing it for next year, we should pretty soon get it rolling to try to see what the interest is out there.
Yeah.
You know, because it just takes a while. You know, because it just takes a while. Like, I think from May to, or October to May is just about the right time.
So, so did we determine who owns the salmon bay?
I don't know that they ever technically have a membership. The chamber believes they own it right now. I don't know how that works, you guys. I thought, when you told me about it, it was a city event, a state's event, and then Brady and Kathy were putting it on. So I figured that between between there short and it wasn't until after that I heard it wasn't maybe.
Yeah, we had to step up last year, or it wasn't gonna happen. Yes.
Another question. So the the chamber put on the credit thing, though, correct?
Right, very well.
Well, but I mean, they.
So.
That was their show.
Another, that was another.
Yes, with city staff doing a lot and this city staff running the kitchen.
That's right.
Which was a wonderful. Did you have background information?
I beg your pardon?
Did you have information?
Yeah, um. The experience, that that, my experience with them, cuz they, it was going on a long before I got here.
You have a lot of years.
But I've been involved with it, um I got deeply involved with it um after Jim Hayes had a heart attack from running it. And so I tried to back him up quite a bit. You're much too late to start anything for the third week in September. This, planning for this starts almost concurrently, not, the crab feed, you start in January and you pull it off. And as soon as you wash the dishes and the crab feed, you hit the ground running to get the salmon bait going. And the first thing you do is you get the volunteers.
Right.
And get them committed.
And I always found that, when I was helping last year, that I called people. You can't just put out a, oh, or you have to call.
No, 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 you have to call every single person.
If they're interested.
And also you need to make sure that, okay, this is what we need you to do. These are the jobs that are available. It it just.
One more.
Forget it this year.
Thank you. So I just wanna make sure that um whatever we say, we put it squarely on the back of the chamber, you know. I do not allow the city blame for this not happening.
And and if we just do nothing, then they will they will blame us, and we're second chair.
So I think we need to.
They can put out the press release.
I'm saying that the chamber of commerce is not able to do the salmon bait this year, and the best we can cancel.
We were just informed.
We were just informed.
Yep, thank you, that's good.
Possibly fire.
Well, no, I wanna give them a chance.
Absolutely, yeah.
We were just informed, just a chamber can no longer.
And the city is exploring options for next year. Leave it at that.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that'd be perfect.
That's a good tip.
Mayor, I, if I could just say, I don't think we should be issuing a news release. It's not our, it's not our position to do that. And I can't imagine people blaming the city. It's not the city's. You know, and and we don't wanna, we don't wanna blame the chamber either. I mean, that just puts us in jeopardy by doing that. Let's just leave it alone.
Not blaming them at all. We're just saying, they still were informed that it was canceled or that they cannot put it on, and uh we can't either, and so I think it's a good idea to do a festival like we have.
Chamber needs to put that forward, cuz they can no longer do it.
Lindsay, did you?
I just have on my mind all of the things that have been kind of cooperatively shared between the chamber and the city, like tents and all the stuff that's in that that closet in the community center and um just making sure that the city winds up straight on on any kind of diss- dissolving of the chamber.
Well, as far as the salmon bait stuff, they would turn all that over to us. Now, I'm not a hundred percent sure what they're gonna do if we say, well, we're willing to take the salmon bait, but we're not gonna put it on this year.
They didn't leave us time.
I know, but what I'm just saying is they may change, so just be quiet.
So they're gonna put it on?
They may just not put it on this year and plan for next year and we do less.
Well, they could put in an RFP then, yes.
I can't.
We should.
We should be looking forward to next year and not counting on the chamber. They showed us kind of a track record.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean.
It'd be good if they did it again, but I'm not gonna count it.
No.
And if they did it again, I'd walk you in the kitchen, yes, and I don't think that's wrong.
Oh, I'll be, well, no.
And I'd be doing what I did, cuz I have so much fun with the crab taste.
But it shouldn't be expected that the city just kind of picks up the slack because the planning has altered.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's move forward.
Okay, so um is the council concurrence with uh talking to the chamber about, do you wanna go ahead and, well, how do we do this? See, I feel like it's not really necessarily a motion, but the the council is willing to um.
No, I think we say we cannot do it this year and leave it at that. Our planning would be, we don't have to tell the chamber that we might plan it for next year. Do we?
Well, we'll be equation, but yeah, if it doesn't seem like that they're planning it, then we we're gonna have to sue.
But we'll have another conversation.
Right.
That's right.
But I think we just tell them we're not gonna be able to do it this year. There's two little ones, which are at the top.
Well, we could take away our permission to use the park.
Oh.
What do you mean?
Because we already gave.
They're not gonna do it this year anyway.
I know, but just put that on the record, that, oh, by the way, you don't have a free park anymore either. Cuz we gave them, remember we gave them permission to use the park for three back, you know, months ago, when we gave it to them for their crab feed.
We did, yeah, we did.
So are you saying that the chamber decides at the last minute, they can put something together, we're not gonna give them that park? So you're saying that you're wanting to cancel, revoke their, a little for, okay.
There's no way they can put something in there.
I I would like for that to be on the record to re- revoke revoke that since you approved it on our record.
No.
So a motion to revoke their permits for the salmon bay, because you motion to approve their, for this. Sorry.
So what do we need to do?
If you, if you want, if you're saying that November one.
I don't think we need to do that right now.
No. Okay, okay, okay.
We're saying we're not doing it this year.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that the city do nothing. Leave us to the chamber to explain. We just move forward.
Is there a second to the motion? For lack of second, that motion is failed. Okay, so it sounds like we're just going to let them know that we're not going to take it on this year either.
This year, and we're considering, we'll consider options, but.
Yeah.
We have.
Yeah. And we'll have Kim relay that for us, okay. Um city staff reports, everybody's had a chance to review what's going on, and there's lots more that's on this one page.
I have some some real quick pictures to show you if you guys don't want.
Oh, yeah.
It's it's a, it's a continuing update of uh what's uh going on with the, what the team's doing.
With what?
What the team is doing. So I didn't give you a very detailed report, because somebody took off on Friday. We won't mention any names, but somebody had a vacation, or had a birthday on Sunday, so he took a three day vacation.
Did you birthday, did you?
On the night.
Three day vacation. Oh, wow, all right. Here comes, here comes the first image that I'm totally thrilled at.
All right. Birthday.
Hold on.
Oh, that's my whale.
Help by it.
He looks crazy.
Do you see something going on the top of his little?
Yay!
He's a little.
He's out.
You guys got Rochester just out.
Oh, that is amazing.
Coco made in Rochester.
Yes, Coco made in Rochester. Isn't that great?
Yeah, we did it.
Not in, oh, you guys talk about the painting, they guys are going to do the cleanup and repair, pull it out from the fall like Coco used to do. Take it to the shop and get it all spick, dunk it over and down and rip it out.
We're gonna try to reach out to the artists and I, I think I talked to Bill.
Cause he can do the, you know, the, uh, great, shaving and all that stuff like that, so. But he's working, yeah.
Yeah, he's founding at least.
All right, so this is the next image that is one of the projects that that I wanted to show you guys. Uh Sandy Brady can tell you about this, that he'll be working on.
Yeah, yeah, stickers.
Under the bridge, no, under the bridge.
Oh, that's, oh, that's the uh.
This is under the bridge by trade winds, by, you know, that end down there. And uh this is the uh, what do you, uh, the, the.
It's it's, there's a line that's holding the uh.
They have, ODOT must be replaced by.
Yeah, a really rusty bracket's holding the water line to the uh Whale Interpreter Center. But it's a lot of water, man, too. The line's okay, it's just the brackets holding it very well.
So he has to replace the brackets all along the water line under the bridge.
And there's graffiti under there too.
And they're gonna have to, you have to set up scaffolding.
Um we can reach out and do that from, uh, it's a lot, we're gonna make sure whoever's got a lanyard on, you just have to reach out really far. But we could do it without any scaffolding, but we're gonna have a person with a with a whole fall harness on. But not that they're gonna be out, but they'll be standing on their feet. You can reach out to that.
And uh we noticed, he took me on tour, cuz I've never been up the bridge, so we noticed that there's a lot of trash. Winds and all that stuff, and he's gone to order the backpack and and have.
It's a backpack, vacuum.
And suck all that up, and and do it on a regular basis, and that's part of what the uh strategic planning and the scheduling will do. And I don't know, some of you have seen this and some haven't, but dun dun dun. Oh, yeah.
Cute.
It's really cute, isn't it?
It's the harbor office.
When's it gonna be done?
They call it.
So uh next.
Are we having a grand opening?
We will be very soon, because next week, the Monday of Tuesday, the electricians will be there to, they expect to move in by next Tuesday.
Oh, gee.
The flooring, the gorgeous new flooring that uh is being put down, um as we.
It looks really good. Yeah, I was taking the farm picture.
Yes, gotta know that it was done.
So the color is uh key, like key lime, but I I call it wasabi.
We had mixed opinions about those colors, but this was a wire.
It's great.
We're asking them, yeah, and we, we are trying to let in the city's little office.
Uh we're working on the design.
Shifong green.
Yes.
Shifong green.
Shifong green. Shifong.
Well, that's not wasabi and the tuna and everything.
I'm I'm going to hopefully bring a design to you guys next two today that they wanna put up for the, uh, they worked with uh Jack, uh Roy and Jack were to come up with. They designed the sign, which will basically be depot bay um partner, I think, and then on our, so we, yeah, on the office will be a barber office or something like that, so.
Yes.
Office.
It's a logo, the bridge logo.
Yeah, with the bridge. And and Jack doesn't notice yet, but Ward Ward wants it back. He wants it like it.
Oh.
He said, you know, he's gonna have electricity right there, so he wants it back.
Okay.
So we could try to add these little.
And just behind the sign, just the sign.
It's shielded, it's shielded.
Yes, yes, just the sign. We're gonna go, we're gonna follow code, I promise.
But the goat's not there yet.
For lighting?
Our lighting has been.
Oh, well, I know that they're working on it.
They're working on it.
Okay, just can't wait till lighted then. We'll wait till lighted, but at least he'll have his sign up, so. Anyway, so I just wanted to share um quick update on the audit is that so many fits and starts on this thing. Um he's supposed to be here tomorrow. He uh they, I got an email from him last Thursday. They wanted a to us to reset them about nineteen twenty seven again. And I said, wait a minute, we just paid you twenty six thousand, you're supposed to be nearly done. I'm not sending you everything again. Um, cuz I don't wanna pay you more money. Well, we have to pay him more money, cuz we're still not done. So we just got a deal for another ten thousand dollars, so we're up to thirty six thousand dollars for nineteen twenty audit, which is still not done yet. He is supposed to be here tomorrow, and he took to, I hope, finished the final stuff. He said to give us our disclaimer for nineteen twenty. I uh would like to go out to an RFP for another auditor. I'm done. This is ridiculous. I got a, the county's going out for another auditor, and they gave me some names of some companies that they, this county manager spoke to at an exact conference, and they are interested, even though he didn't say it was us. He said there's a little city that needs help and they're interested, so. That's my primary.
What's, what do you need to make that up?
I just, just, you guys, there's, according to the public contract that calls, I I can do this. You will have to just approve the contract.
Was it considered? I have one more question. So when you talk about audit, is, does that also include the original deal?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, he gave me, it's hard to have an audit for nineteen twenty, but it's almost, they'd have to do that.
I have a question. So with all of this time taken and then what we've decided, is it staffing or what is the reason for?
They're over.
For this?
Uh staffing, vacations, um time off, uh not time off, but they, but I know Paul has told me he's had a couple deaths in the family. And I guess he doesn't come to the wake homes.
Can I get out?
I'm not too hard to get. Mostly just their time.
Yeah.
Getting their time to do it.
Schedule, I said. We haven't been too much of a squeaky wheel, or have we?
No, I've been a very squeaky wheel.
Oh, okay, you've been a squeaky wheel. It doesn't make any difference.
It doesn't make any difference. I squeaked as loud as I could.
I know, I know.
Yeah, we're kinda caught.
And that's the thing, and the county's in the same position we are. They, I search not done per se. And um we're in the same position where it's gonna be hard for that auditor to come in if we don't get nineteen twenty. So that's why I said we'll be finally getting nineteen twenty done. I just, we don't have a contract with I S D O M, so I just.
Twenty twenty.
Yeah, when we finish with nineteen twenty.
Nineteen twenty.
Where am I at? Why do I need to?
Twenty twenty.
Oh, nineteen twenty.
This whole year nineteen twenty. Oh.
Your records record that on. Yeah, it's a bonfire.
Oh, guys, you're all. I didn't think we were that bad.
No, I, I'm sorry, I see feeling. Nineteen slash twenty, I don't.
Twenty twenty, yeah, twenty.
All right, let's go on, guys, let's get to go home.
Okay.
Closing public comments. Any public comments tonight? Okay, council comments, who wants to jump in? Fran?
I just saw a post from Claire Paul saying that um, this is from yesterday. Today, the State Housing Stability Council, funding for numerous projects around the state, including for the depot bay townhomes. A twelve unit development designed for wildfire survivors, where all will be permanent housing. The homes are being built um as six units on a two acre site. That's the one by the.
The RFP.
Yeah. The council, which has Sir Johnson's career asked to be since twenty eighteen, and as their chair since twenty twenty, has funded, reviewed and approved funding for all um state financed housing. The council's housing authority, the co-developer of the townhomes, will receive two point three million in state tax credit. Total project cost is five point six million. The housing authority assigned work agreements with several associated service agencies. So that's coming.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
Two point three million in state tax credit.
That's great.
Cool. Autumn, did you have any? Lindsay?
I did. I wanted to um just mention that um I've been noticing a lot of communities having really nice bike paths. Um separate paths from the highway. Um I was in Joseph this last week and have a really nice bike path that exists their community and heads towards the state park. And I um haven't talked to uh somebody in the city about the process they went through to get that bike path going. And I'm gonna do some more research and report back to council. Um and I have also looked at a couple, they they kind of pointed me to um the director at ODOT of the um this type of projects and also a couple of their communities um that had these bike paths. And I just wanna see what the steps they took to get um to get those bike paths in and just start exploring what potentially we can do to look at bike paths in our area. So I will report back to council, what I find.
Awesome. Councillor Beasley?
Thank you, mayor. I just wanna thank our audio engineer, councillor Rekt, for, you know, fixing the microphones tonight. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bernie.
Um I appreciated being be being here and and the fact that he recognizes, the city recognizes the need to go and protect the watershed and those little tributaries, so. If he, I can help him at all, like platinum things, I don't want.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and I have anything to say, let's go home. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I.
Just okay.
Very.
Ever.
We're sending it to the farmer, it's great.
Yeah.
Yes, uh, please, I forgot to give you the two beginning meetings. So, one is now first report for Steve.
Oh, okay, thank you. But, oh.
Steve.
Oh, first student.
Oh, first student. That was a big time, that was a big time a little, it was a couple days ago.
Yeah.
In our area, well, a lot of reasons why this whole round one.
Oh, and the other one is the thank you card for Representative Oliver. If you guys wanted to sign it.
Yeah.
No, that was nice.
Yeah, that was a nice one.
And Kathy put that up down the house and we're sending something from the away.
I saw.
David Oliver.
I think it's covered by.
It was covered, but it's still out.
That is a little weird. I kind of knew it earlier.
And that's, it's, it's.
I know, it's still for over. Oh, so, uh, and this is really, but things like that actually gets ODOT's attention to our, uh, for access.
Don't get it.
It's kind of all right, it's actually.
I'm sorry, I'm not for giving you first, you got.
It takes the attention if you tell.
You have to. We're the only town in the city that doesn't have a bike lane. Okay. I, I talked to somebody who's on a bike toll. We're the only city on the road here that does not have a bike toll.
Hey, I'm gonna start, I really wanna work on this. I'm gonna start finding out what we can do, what are the steps.
It's so, so nice, but.
I know.
So, how, how's the word about the?